Follow me in order. Uh, we do have a quorum, uh, taking motion to fill the agenda in a minute, please. You're so moved. I'll second that motion. Will favor I? All right, bye. Close. Motion will carry. Good morning, Rich Brown, you on there?
I am, how are you guys this morning?
How are you?
Good, um, just a couple of things, uh, we did get, uh, the, the Army Corps did get ahold of us and they didn't like us plugging that culvert there down on the county line, so we went back and opened it back up for them, um, so.
Why is that? That was put in, that was man-made, you know what I mean?
I, I completely understand, I tried to explain that to the biologist at the Army Corps, but, uh, he, uh, pretty much said regardless of whether or not, that still had a natural flow to it. And, uh, if we wanted to keep it the way it was, we were gonna have to buy stream bed credits, and I said, I'm not paying for anything, so. We just, uh, it's, uh, yeah, I don't know, it's something that happened with the Clean Water Act in like 2015, I think it was, something that was passed, um, and I tried to explain to him, we didn't consider that, and in his letter, he wrote, because we had wrote letters already to the Army Corps stating, this is why we did what we did, and, and, uh, he said, well, you guys don't think this is a a natural stream bed, here are the photos that show the natural stream bed, and I said, I understand that, but this would have never been put in had, uh, had the landowner not wanted the water to begin with, and it wouldn't have existed at all, I said, well, that's, that's the way it, you know, regardless of whether that's what it was supposed to be, you know, that's the way it is now, is that it still took natural flow, and so, uh, we opened it back up, and we're clear of the Army Corps, I guess, I hope so, I'll be sending them an email to prove that we did it, but uh, right now, it's opened up, and it's not even, well, right now, the, the landowner in the south there doesn't have the waterway put back in yet, but it's not even overflowing the hole that we made on the outlet side, so very little water is gonna be flowing, but, uh.
Make him put that waterway back in?
What's that?
Can make him put that waterway back in?
If he, if he doesn't put it back in, and he wants to reroute it, he's gonna have to pay for stream bed credits.
Okay.
I'm sure he doesn't wanna spend the money on something like that either, I talked to him, I talked to, to Lutz last week, and told him what the story was and what was supposed to happen, so. I'm just in the good graces of the Army Corps of Engineers, so.
All you guys got the ditch cleaned out, and if Cerro Verde, I think, was there to clean their portion of the ditch out, it should stay in that ditch and run around, shouldn't it?
Well, they did clean the ditch, but our flow line's a lot lower than what the flow line of that ditch is now, just be based on the existing culvert, and if he wanted to reroute that water, they wouldn't accept that as the natural flow, so he would have to pay for 500 feet of stream bed. I don't know what they call it, stream bed credits, I guess, kinda like wetlands. The Army Corps said it's a really expensive process, and I said, I don't wanna get involved, so we opened it back up. We're gonna walk away from it, so.
Okay.
I guess it is what it is on the, with the respect to those guys, so I tried to let them know that we didn't feel it was necessary that it had to be in there, but, uh, when the Army Corps and the biologists are telling us to put it back in, we'll do what we said, what they say, and, and, uh, we'll go from there, so.
All right.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of a ridiculous thing, we try to look at things, like, you know, I kind of explained, I said, the guy downstream back in the seventies, he rerouted the water, he didn't have to, well, that was back in the seventies, our our statute of limitations only goes back five years, and I'm like, well, and the, 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 the real issue is, is the, the kinda bad thing was, is that Jamie was trying to do the right thing, you know, by notifying the DNR and the Army Corps saying, here's what I wanna do, and when it's all said and done, it's not what they want, so, you know. I guess if he wouldn't have called them, then they wouldn't know about it, and then who knows, but right, right is right, I guess, so.
Yep.
We'll just go from there, so. Anyway, we're hoping to get a little bit of moisture this week, um, maybe get the blades back out, I know there's some roads that are pretty choppy. I know that there's some locations where uh, they could use a good blading, but with all the dust, it's not gonna tie down yet, or with all the, all the, with all drop, with as dry as it is and hard it is, it's not gonna tie down yet, so hopefully we get a little bit of rain this week, and we'll send them back out later this week and try to cover as much ground as we can and get stuff shaped back up before winter.
Wait a week?
Pardon me?
Bring wait a week for moisture?
I hope, well, I I guess I'll do what I can and tell the guy upstairs, or the, the person upstairs, that, uh, we, we could hold off for a little bit, but I don't know if they're gonna listen to me or not.
Wait for a break, anyway, couple days off, winter.
So, anyway, too, I've got the, the plans for 105 submitted, there, there's the check plans, and then kind of got a rough estimate of about 3.4 million on the cost of that, if you guys wanna, you know, see what happens with funding, but, uh.
Okay. Be a good idea, we gotta figure out something on that road, so.
Yep, and so, and it makes sense, I used the, the numbers from the last project there as, as a baseline for costs. Um, I'm not sure, it sounds like next year might be a skinny year for paving, so maybe the numbers will be better than we think, who knows? You just never know, so.
Oh, I know, I had the transportation meeting this week, and I know they said that, like, some of the tax, road tax bill money was, it didn't get as bad as they thought, but yet it was still down quite a bit, and it's, it's starting to pick up a little, but.
Yeah, I, I think what they were saying, you know, they were, they were, they were scared at 20%, and it's re- reality is probably around 10%.
Right.
And back, so it wasn't, it isn't like a complete 10% for the year, and when you look at the overall county budget, or the secondary road budget, that portion of the, the money that was kinda reduced is probably closer to about maybe 5% of the total secondary road budget that's affected, so.
Right.
Not to say that we're just, not to say that we're bulging at the seams with cash, but, you know, 5% is still a lot of money, but, um, we gotta work with it, I guess, so.
Yep. Well, that's good, and hopefully contractors are still hungry, and, you know, there's lots of projects going on, but I think people are hungry, so.
Right, and then, uh, also the wind towers, they, uh, they rocked a section of road last week, um, it was 485th from Ran over to Xenia, they put about six inches of rock in that road.
Wow.
It wasn't one that they had had in their initial plan, so, um, they took care of that, so. That's good. And I think we're gonna try to maybe, before the ground gets too hard, we'll have to, I know they've been maintaining the roads through there pretty well, but they might be pretty dang hard by now, we might have to run through with our stinger blaze before winter time, just to kinda help them if they need need to get things, uh, shaped back up before the ground freezes, but um, their progress, they're progressing, I see that, uh, hell, with all the wind, they probably couldn't have done much erection last week, so um, they're probably falling behind, but as far as the roadway goes, we just had, uh, a couple people that have had some issues that we've been trying to take care of, so.
Good.
Sounds good.
You got any questions for me? If not, I'll stick around and listen to what you guys got going on.
Good.
Good to go, thank you, Rich.
You.
Uh, drainage? Nothing? Any claims, regular claims? Uh, reports? Off of 341, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
Motion to approve reports, I'll second that motion, there's discussion? Will favor I?
Bye.
Bye. Close?
Motion will carry.
Can I sign this one?
No.
Any favorable eligibility or salary changes?
Nope.
Your license?
Yep.
I have a new venue. The township.
Is there another one up there?
That's a new one.
Is it all, it's new?
Yeah, they just, I think they're just. Oh, lazy.
Oh, that's a different.
It's a, well, it's a venue, too, I think it's a small venue, anyway.
Small venue, small vineyard.
Yep, small vineyard.
Greens?
Local, local boy that's, uh, put it together, so I'll make a motion to approve your license.
Right, motion to approve the liquor license for Lazy Acres Vineyard. Uh, I will second that motion, any other discussion? Will favor I?
Bye.
Uh, proposed? Carry.
They just kinda opened this fall for tasting and stuff, didn't they?
They had that, uh, with the border stuff up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was a lot of people that were there, and it was pretty darn good wine.
It was, gonna get up there, I haven't been up there yet. I drive a bike quite a bit.
Very nice place.
Yeah, beautiful.
Jeff, planning and zoning discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, well, let's start with the last bit first, I don't know if, uh,
Yep, we got that.
Jack, can we give you that?
Yep.
So, I got records related to the zoning board of adjustment and the planning commission, I'm actually on the planning commission, not the zoning board, so there's not a conflict there that I see. Um, however, if you jump down to the bottom of that first page, I should have reordered these differently. Um, the Iowa Code 335.8, um, states that members of the planning commission and board of uh, adjustment reside in the county but outside the limits of any city, and when I reviewed our ordinance specific to that, uh, it said that, uh, uh, the county has also restricted the appointment of persons residing in the zone townships of that county. So, we need to revisit that once we have our, our other conversation, because right now, there's uh, myself on the planning commission and Marvin Bertrude, uh, Bradreid on the zoning board of adjustment, both of us are outside of those three townships. Uh, so we would not be eligible to be on those boards if the zoning ordinance is restricted to just those three townships. So, we would have to get replaced.
Uh, change, somebody.
Change our ordinance before we change, try to find other people, be easier.
Yeah.
I'm just glad, I mean.
I said that each of our terms, uh, expire at the end of the year, that, that's a mistake, I had crossed my lines when I was reading across, uh, mine doesn't expire until 2021. But if the ordinance only applies to those three, I'm not eligible to be on that, uh, planning commission. Uh, so, back up to, um, the updates as a result of the attendance of the, uh, planning and zoning class that I attended last week, uh, they added, uh, land enrolled in soil or water conservation programs should be considered land primarily adapted for ag purposes. That's important because Iowa Code and the county ordinance both exempt ag land. Um, there's specific language in there that talks about land, farmhouse, farm barns, farm, farm outbuildings, or other buildings or structures which are primarily adapted by reason of nature and area for use for agricultural purposes while so used. Uh, so, i- our ordinance goes on to say, it should be the responsibility of any person or group claiming that property is entitled to exemption on that basis, uh, to demonstrate that the property is used for agricultural purposes, so bottom line, if, if somebody says that, you know, that this stuff is, is exempted from zoning regulations according to our ordinance and state law, um, they have to show that it's used for those particular purposes. It was brought up in the class that some counties were requiring people to apply for those exemptions, and the state law made it clear that you did not need to apply, uh, for those exemptions. Uh, but they did, uh, indicate that, um, you know, if somebody lives in, in those kinds of areas, and they are looking to construct something new in those areas, that, um, you know, they'd be encouraged to verify with zoning administrators to make certain that that particular building that they're putting in, uh, is in fact exempted. Uh, but there, there, there should not be a required application for that. Uh, turning the page, um, the planning and zoning commission, review of changes to comprehensive plans. Um, the, the recent, uh, House File 2512 expanded the role of the commission, uh, the planning commission, and it requires the commission to make changes to plan before the board of supervisors make changes. Prior to that, um, once that comprehensive land use plan had been approved by the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors could on their own make amendments uh, to that plan. This law changes that and says, even if it's initiated by the board of supervisors, it still needs to flow through the planning commission to look at it and provide recommendation back. Related, our plan was approved in 2006. Um, I've not been able to find any records that it's been reviewed, um, since then, I know it's not been updated, or rather, I haven't found any updates to it since then. Um, ISAT recommends a review at least every five years, and it's intended to be a 15 to 20-year plan, ours is right at 15 years now. So, I think, um, I, I believe that the, the, one of the duties of the zoning administrator described in our county ordinance, uh, one of the duty states to carry out administrative duties for both the planning and zoning commission and the board of adjustment, among other things. Um, so I believe that it should be the, the responsibility of the zoning administrator to initiate those reviews at least every five years, um, so that's something I'd, I'd like to add into the ordinance to render explicit that the zoning administrator will initiate on a five-year plan, uh, a review of that comprehensive plan with the, the planning, uh, planning commission.
So, is that something you have to put together a meeting, you guys agree on it, and then you bring it to us, and we okay it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I also think that, um, in addition to some of the things that we'll, we'll talk about in this, this other item, um, related to planning and zoning, um, right now, the zoning administration and information we have for county residents, and the typo got me there, it should be residents, not residence. Um, residents as in people. Uh, I think we could improve that with some, some added guidance. Right now, we've got two versions of the original zoning ordinance that are online. One's a cleaner copy than the other, but they're, they're texturally, they're, they're identical. I have found, um, four, I think, um, ordinances that have been enacted since that zoning ordinance that made changes to that zoning ordinance. Uh, I've got the text of that, uh, I worked with Joel to get a, um, uh, uh, Adobe Acrobat, so I could edit things, and he also uh, found a bunch of files that, um, a, a prior zoning administrator had, so I've been going through that, and I found some Word versions of that, so I've been making updates to a, to a copy, just to incorporate those ordinances that have already passed. Once I've done with that, uh, I plan to work with Jackie and, and, or whomever, um, to remove the two versions that are online right now, add the updated version, uh, and then I also think that, um, uh, that particular ordinance could be improved if we add some appendices that provide some administrative guidance. Um, some of that administrative guidance that I described, uh, on the page here is uh, an application for a zoning change, an application for a conditional use permit, the, the, a number of these kinds of things that are described in the zoning ordinance as required, but I've not been able to locate online, or in some instances, even in the files, um, versions of applications that people would use for these, these kinds of purposes. So, I can work with I-COG to, to get examples of those kinds of things, and I did find some prior um, completed examples, not blank forms, but we can create blank forms off of the completed examples, um, so we can create those things and, and put those things online as well. And I didn't know if, if we needed board of supervisors, um, well, certainly we need board of supervisors approval on changes to the ordinance, but would I need approval from the board of, uh, supervisors for posting of these blank applications online?
We could probably just do it as a formality, I mean, we could do it as a formality, 'cause basically, the way I see it is we're not gonna change anything or do anything with, we're gonna, whatever you recommend is obviously following the codes, the ordinances, you know, so I mean, if you bring something to us that says, this is how it states, this is how it works out, we're gonna follow what, what you and the planning board says, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a package together then of these, these blank applications, and, 'cause I, I, it's important to was get the updated information that we know needs to be updated, was get that stuff out there, get these blank forms out there for people to use. And if there's, there's longer-term things that are, you know, gonna take a bit longer that go through planning commission and then board of supervisors and so on, we can address those at a later date.
Right.
Okay. Right, um, so, that said, um, back to the, uh, larger, uh, discussion I had provided the other week, um, the first page was titled general zoning-related questions for the board of supervisors or legal counsel. The, the first couple of, uh, first couple of items just simply states what is in place. Um, and, and then there's a, a question at the bottom of the first paragraph um, that essentially says, is the Work County Comprehensive Development Plan synonymous with what Iowa Code refers to as the land preservation? That's a question I think that, that Greaves needs to answer for, because both of those documents are referenced in Iowa Code, and they're used for somewhat related purposes, but they are two differently named things. And, so I think it's important that, um, we understand if we can use our comprehensive development plan for both purposes, or if there's a separate land preservation ordinance that would be, be applicable. Um, the next one talks about annually, uh, an annual review by the planning and zoning commission uh, of the, uh, the comprehensive development plan. Um, we talked about that a moment ago, just adding that in, so I'll initiate that change that will have to go through the planning commission and then to you guys, but I'll initiate the meeting with the planning and zoning commission to.
Does that commission just meet when there's a need for it, or do you guys, okay, you don't have like a required, like you meet twice a year regardless?
No.
Okay.
It might be a good thing to add in.
Well, if, if this is gonna be part of it, reviewing this comprehensive plan or reviewing anything, I'd say at least once a year, maybe come in like the end of the year or something, say, okay, we just need to meet, we haven't met at all because there's been nothing, no need to, we need to meet, just review this stuff, there's any changes in that, just keep us more up to date.
Yep.
Maybe even, maybe even reach out and see what other counties do.
Right, right, 'cause I still, I, I gotta apologize, I have not talked to Mitchell or Winnebago, kinda had a busy week last week, so I I try to space that stuff, so I will, we'd still be working on that to try to get some idea on a new administrator and that. But as far as that goes, yeah, I mean, maybe that's something the zoning board or commission board needs to just meet.
Yeah.
Basically, once a year, like I said, if they haven't met, or, you know, and you can just throw that into a meeting, we do, but otherwise, just make.
Especially if there's updates.
Yeah. Yep, yep. And then if it's, if it's a change, you know, that we have to change our ordinance, then you can say, okay, we need to change this, but us will approve what you guys say, and we'll make that change, so.
Uh, these next couple of ones, I've kinda found answers to them as I, as I attended the class, and I've been talking to I-COG and, and others. Um, the, the ordinance describes the county zoning map and the need to maintain those. I did verify, uh, with the gentleman that, that taught the class last week, we can use, uh, GIS as our official zoning map, we just need to make sure we maintain the records that are used to update that map, uh, and then we need to render explicit that if people want to see the zone areas, that's where they would go to see it.
That you could just, like, a layer, couldn't we? We've already got.
There's, there's a layer on there, yeah, it's just not clear that that's the official map.
Oh, okay, and I don't think I've had any real updates on that since probably generalizes.
Yeah, and I know there's been zoning changes since.
Right, so, but as far as the area has not changed, no.
Cause there's, like, there's one in, um, one acreage by the interstate that was, um, switched to, like, light industrial or something, and I'm guessing, and, and it's already changed hands again. I, I don't know if that needs to be changed back, or, I, I have no clue.
Right.
I'll just have to go through the records and find the things that have changed and give it to all the, get those updates. Um, number two on that, uh, items pertaining to county zoning ordinance, uh, I did find some old, um, zoning certificates that Jim Rice had, had issued, so I can create some, some blanks out of that, so that one's taken care of. Um, I've also, uh, been able to understand how on number three, I raised the question about the agriculture exemption, and yet we had the A1 agricultural district, and I was asking, how does that reconcile? How can you, on the one hand, say ag land is exempt from the regs, but then, on the other hand, have, as part of the reg, regs apply to, to ag land? Um, and essentially, what that is doing is, is helping to refine what those exemptions, uh, cover, what that, what that ag land is, is, is intended to be used for. Um, I've also, uh, answered number four, uh, with regard to conditional uses and permits. Um, I, I have found, again, some forms that Jim Rice had used to issue the permits for conditional use, and I verified with the ISAT instructor that, um, conditional use, the, the language in our ordinance that describes conditional use permits is intended to say you can use the land for these conditional uses, but you do need a permit to do so. Not sure why it just wouldn't say you can use it for this or this, but you can use it for this or the conditional use, but you still gotta get a permit for the conditional use.
Yep.
Um, so the last, uh, item number five on items pertaining to zoning ordinance with regard to, um, C2 commercial district, I did find, um, zoning ordinance, um, text associated with that, uh, since I had, had, uh, raised this question. Um, interestingly, I found, um, we have a C or, a, a C zone, we have a C1 zone and a C2 zone. One of the zones, it appears, was created specifically for, uh, the casino area, because it's a very, very shortly described zone that refers to gaming activities, gaming and entertaining activities. Um, having a very narrowly carved out zone, I, I don't know, I think there's some, some overlap between that zone and one of our other commercial zones, so that's something I'll, I'll raise to the planning commission as well, and see if we can clean that up, because there's, there's a lot of duplicative language uh, between that zone and one of the others.
Just makes me wonder if that was kinda just thrown in there, obviously it was built.
I think it was a quick fix.
If that was a more of a state-guided thing, too, where, you know, you have to spell that out specifically in that zone, I bet, that being a gaming facility or whatever. So, that's probably why they just made that site-specific, you know, it, it makes sense.
Yeah.
So.
Yep. Um, all right, uh, so then we have, uh, items pertaining to a document titled the subdivision ordinance. Um, I still have not been able to determine for certain if that is a an in, in-force ordinance. Does anybody have any recollection or awareness of whether that subdivision ordinance was ever approved?
Uh, you know, I've only been on for a year, he's only been on two, and you just said this was, you know, it's kinda like, mm, no, not that I know of.
I have a whole bunch of books you can look at.
Yeah.
It was even before your time.
I think it was before my time.
Yeah.
I think it, it's, um, I think it's, it's very important, um, particularly with regard to the things that, that Cindy's group does. Um, and I know I, uh, I think I, I've given you a copy, do you have an opinion as to whether or not uh, an ordinance of that nature is required?
Not that I know of, nope. Never seen within the assessor's office on it.
Okay, well, I'll do some more digging and find out, um, what its, its history is. Um, there is state code that describes explicitly, um, things that are required for subdivisions, subdividing of property.
Right.
Well, there are parameters, like, you have to so many.
Yeah, yeah, so if somebody has a parcel, and, and I know we see this all the time, somebody has a parcel, and they wanna cut that parcel into multiple parcels now. Um, a- and those things are being submitted to the assessor, so I, I think it is, and because there's Iowa Code that describes what has to be in place, what kinda reviews are required and so on, that, um, uh, I believe a county ordinance of this nature is appropriate, so that's just a matter of how do we move this draft version, if we assume it's a draft, how do we move that forward to approval, so I'll bring that up in, in discussion with the planning commission as well.
Sure, sure. Yeah, if, if there's, there's probably should be something out there, I would suppose, just more of a paperwork to trace paper, you know?
Yep, yep.
For that effect, yeah.
And I'll work with Cindy's team as well, 'cause I think somebody from your office should be involved in that conversation, moving that forward. Um, so that, during that conversation, we'll address my number three there, because the ordinance refers to a Platts officer. Um, but I wasn't clear on who is the Platts officer, I'm, I'm assuming it's probably you.
Well.
If it isn't, it probably will be.
Maybe Jack, she's the auditor, I mean, she's the keeper of the book, that book, so I would say it.
It may be Jackie. She's the auditor. I mean, she's the keeper of the book, that book, so I would say it would probably.
You want another title?
Yeah, I know. If I get another check, I'd be all for it.
Well.
Not that we can't do how we want it, want to do it, but.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll work with Jackie and Cindy on that.
After November 4th, please.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there was a requirement before, we could necessarily just throw it at you, but it'd just have to, she would just have to be brought in on the conversation. And basically, you'd treat it like we would, you just gonna sign off on it, you know what I mean?
We just sign off.
Just sign off on it.
Well, like we do on, like I do on all the transfers technically.
Right.
I mean, those all go through my office.
Yes, we're doing this, yeah. Yeah, should be. But he's bringing to you, so here's the deal, so you gotta sign off, so you know it's, as the keeper of the Platts.
So I'll use that body of work then with Jackie and Cindy and the planning commission to address my number four and five as well. Pertaining to the ordinances at large, I think we discussed that briefly. I think we still have work to do again after, after the election to get those things out there.
Cause I'm guessing one of the last Platts, newer Platts that was done was probably Sterling Acres and Manly. And that, that was even before me, so.
Okay, all right. Next are the questions related to the scope of the county zoning ordinance. I'm not gonna go through this whole front page. All I'm doing in this front page is laying out, this is what the state code says, this is what our, our county comprehensive development plan says, the zoning ordinance. It really boils down to what should be the scope of our zoning ordinance. Historically, I think it has been interpreted and, in fact, applied only to those three townships that reside along the I-35 corridor. And I understand historically, that probably came about because the countywide was unzoned. And when I-35 was coming through and people were looking at a variety of things happening along the corridor, the immediate need was, well, let's get something in place for there. And there, I can only surmise that there was reticence among some, who knows how many, to zone the rest of the county, that it was gonna be just those three. Fast forward then to 2006, we have the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Iowa code talks about the preservation of ag land in Iowa as a, as a significant intent of zoning ordinances and the need for zoning ordinances. Our Comprehensive Land Use Plan repeats that intent that says that, you know, we want to retain ag land, we want to retain agricultural uses. We want to ensure that there's a, a, a marriage, if you will, of other purposes for use of the land, where those other purposes help to, to enhance or are compatible uses with ag use. And it talks about trying to focus those kinds of things along major transportation corridors, whether they be highways, rail corridors, et cetera. Today, we have the situation where we have that Comprehensive Land Use Plan that describes these goals countywide. And it even goes so far as to lay out future land use guidance and carve out certain parts of the county for different kinds of use, for mining, as an example, or industrial or recreational use. It just, it seems contradictory to me on its face to say, we have this comprehensive county land use plan that describes all of these things, that everything that anybody does is supposed to be evaluated through the lens of this comprehensive plan, and then at the same time, say, but we're only gonna control those, those townships along I-35 corridor. I understand there's, I don't know all of the, the arguments or rationale behind advocacy that says the rest of the county should be unzoned. I can surmise that, in part, it's because people don't like control, people don't like government control. They don't want somebody, I'm in currently unzoned land. I don't want somebody coming to my place saying, no, you can't put that building up. No, you can't do this, you can't do that. I certainly understand that. I would call attention, however, to Iowa code and the county ordinance that presents that ag land exemption. So if we refer back to that language about farms, farmland, farm buildings, et cetera, et cetera, if it's used for those purposes, the ordinance does not apply. Now, if you decide you're gonna, you know, on your ag land, put up a barn and use that barn for wedding events, that particular example is real, it happens to be in those, those zoned townships. But right now, there's nothing to prevent anybody from putting up whatever they want anywhere in the county. And that, that seems contradictory to our Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Iowa code. At a minimum, I think if we want to retain the historical understanding that the ordinance only applies to those townships, we should render that explicit in the text of the ordinance.
Not on top?
Not just in a parenthetical on top.
Yeah.
We're on the same page. It says county without any restrictors. I personally don't believe that's the, the appropriate approach, just reading of the code and our Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I think reconciling those things requires that it's, it's all or none. We either are a zoned county or we are not. And if we're a zoned county, then I think we need to render that explicit. And in either case, we need to make some kind of update to the, to the zoning ordinance.
Sure.
Yeah. Before you render an opinion, because the zoning ordinance, I think, is, is, you know, the text of the ordinance, the amendments are typically, they're generated through the planning commission, a meeting of the residents that are appointed to the commission, that craft text for the ordinance and then present that to the board of supervisors. I think that's the appropriate way to go. Again, just being the interim administrator, I didn't know if it was within my purview to simply call the planning and zoning commission and say, hey, there's a question, I have a question about this, this is what I think, what do you think? And we craft the language and present it to you.
I would say.
I think that's the direction that we should go, but I wanted to raise it with you guys.
Yeah, and we, you know, I think we're in the same boat here on that too, because that's what you guys is, the commission is, you know, I understand it's a volunteer thing, you know, but that, that's what it is. Basically, if something does come up, it goes through that planning commission.
They need to pull board, whatever you want to call it, full permission, needs to put it together and then bring it to, not just yourself. And you are in charge right now, so until that changes. And if that's something that you want to look at, you need to put it together and I would say bring it to us.
Yeah, yeah. That is, I think, a planning commission decision. You know, just get that board together, bring these up, make the changes, or, you know, suggest the changes you want to make or do whatever. And if your board is all in agreement with it, bring it to us, this is what we recommend we change, and then we can, we can approve those changes, you know, if that's what the board, your board wants to do. And yeah, it is, because we, that's who we fall back on is, you know, making those decisions for the zoned areas, so. I mean, yeah, that, personally, yeah, that's stuff that should go through that, that board. And if they're all in agreement of it, then bring it back to us and we'll, we'll act on it.
Then you guys are gonna have to realize that'll be a bigger job then. And I mean, because we have 12 townships, not just three.
Well, if you look at the overall thing there, and I'll just, you know, you're gonna have some huge resistance. And I think that's why it hasn't been.
Well, I mean, either way, whether we're talking three or 12, if you just update those three, because we know that's a fact, and specify that in that ordinance as the first change. If there's anything else that would come through to zone the rest of the county, then that's gonna completely, that's gonna start all over anyways.
Well, and is there anything per code that you have to do regarding zoning, if you're zoned or not?
We have to be.
Just, just because it's in the code? Or do you have, do they have to be zoned by the county before anything happens?
Either partial or full, I mean, by code.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So she's like, is code, is code dictating that we cannot just zone three townships?
Yeah.
And not the whole county? That's, I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Even, even with, with, even without zoning, is there certain things with the unzoned townships that should be happening already per code, or we just don't look at those because it's not the plan?
There's no ordinance or anything, any laws or restrictions in place that would, you know, we have to follow?
Yeah.
It's only that way.
Zoning just puts in place an actual process in favor, in a certain favor of zoning either, or anything, because I like much reading.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, you said the word variances, things like that. You know, zoning just puts into place a process that you have to go through to build the building you want or do the things you want. And it does, as long as you follow the steps, generally, it's gonna happen regardless. Still happens, it just happens quicker now.
Right, yeah. It, it boils down to both Iowa code and the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan says, we like things the way they are. We recognize that things will change, things need to change, and we want to enhance the, the economy of the county at large. And that there's a variety of different uses that are appropriate for the county. That being said, the county, through the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and the state requires that you have a Comprehensive Land Use Plan if you're gonna have zoning regulations. So that the zoning regulations and the process that you described, Mark, is applied through the, through the lens of that Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And there was a great deal of effort and a lot of discussion and involvement by people across the county in developing that Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And in order for us to effectively manage the county lands consistent with that, we need to have the processes in place to, to do so.
Well, and on the flip side of that, you know, you guys like your freedom, but then everybody else has freedom too. So something across the road could pop up, like happens around here, that you might not like. And if there were at least procedures in place, you would have to go through due diligence to be able to.
It's not to say it's not gonna happen, it's just that it's gonna be an informed, more informed process.
Like minor management, or like, well, not to bring that up.
Another example is, is from what I understand, one of the reasons why Manly has a zoning ordinance and why they've extended it to that two-mile extraterritorial zone is because there was indications that somebody wanted to bring in a juice bar or strip bar or something. And Manly went, we do not want that, there's nothing to prevent that from happening unless we have a zoning ordinance that says what's okay and what's the process.
And zoning is, is not a bad thing. Basically, you'd set up your ordinance, okay? It's, you can't, I don't think you can legally tell people they cannot build this, they cannot do this, but they just have to do it to these guidelines or these specs. Changes, changes can be made.
Where, you can ask for.
Yes, yes. Changes can be made, so it's not, it's not a horrible thing where I'm gonna come into control of your land. No, it don't, it just, now there's a process to it, and it all can still be done, it just.
Or having setbacks for safety of people on the road.
Exactly, for, yeah.
Safety of other people who surround that, like.
Yeah.
But then everybody knows your business.
And I think we can point to the historical application of the zoning ordinance in those three townships as evidence. I don't know that.
Really hasn't been a whole lot, other than building the casino, but, so I guess, here's what I would say. Number one, you need to start the process of what you're thinking about. But I'll be honest, until we have a full board sitting here, I don't think we want to act on anything.
I agree.
It's after March. Regardless of who's saying this.
It's gonna take a while anyway.
Right.
You're taking some steps, I think you're doing the right thing, and we'll, you know, when, when that process is all done, then we'll decide. You know, I think in the past, I think there was a process done, I think the board passed on a lot of it. I think there was a plan for countywide zoning from what I was told. And at the time, they either ignored it or passed it, and I don't know how many years ago that's been, but. So, because, like I said, I think the plan was in place to do it all at one point, so. Yeah.
Yeah, it obviously has been.
One of the board members told me about it, and the board just, supervisors simply just didn't act on it, I guess, and that's why it got dropped.
It's, it's obviously out there, so it's been discussed before.
I mean, so, till we, you know, till we know what's all involved and we get public input.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, but we need to have a full board present to do all that, any actions.
That's a major change in the county.
As far as, as far as anything that's with those three townships, feel free to work with your board. Go ahead, we can update that, that's, that's not changing.
Right.
We just need to make sure we're, we're in line, we're square with that thing.
Getting things up to speed.
Yeah, so that, that won't change. So, I mean, yeah, feel free to continue on that, and we can, we can, we can move on that portion. But as far as.
Countywide.
Countywide.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to do the process, that's your job, I mean, as a member, until we get somebody different or whatever, and, you know, and then hopefully you'd still be sitting on the board, so.
In the, in the interim then, again, if we, if the, if the ordinance only applies to those three townships, then once again, we're in the situation where Marvin, we, we would not be able to ask Marvin to, to consent to another term on the zoning board of adjustment. And that leaves the, the situation where my seat on the planning commission would not be appropriate as a board member.
Right, right. Well, I think as for now, we need to start looking a little bit, and I can help. I mean, obviously, I don't know a ton that way, but I do know some people.
But isn't there something that will be, because our terms, the term, there's, there's a variety. If it's not just us, there's a variety of other people that, the terms expire at the end of this year. Actually, there's three on the planning commission that expire this year. And Marvin is the only one on the board of adjustment that expires this year. So isn't there something that's already, will be in play here pretty soon, seeking, seeking people to sit on those boards?
I'm putting the administrator notice out first, and then I'll put the one.
Yeah, after the, after the first year, we will go through all those boards, go through our boards, you know, whatever we're on, and then the appointed ones, like what we did, what we had to find, you know.
It would be nice that we had them in place, and then whoever's sitting here in January, whatever, does the appointments at that time to those boards that have the names, you know, volunteers.
Because we basically go through, yeah, they're not dead, yeah, they're not dead. Send out a letter, and as long as we don't hear anything back, they're still, no offense to you. I mean, that's just the way it's happened.
Yes.
Yeah.
If they don't beg a plea to get off.
But I finally, I finally changed the language in the letter, saying that, hey, if you've been on this long enough and you don't want to do it anymore, and we did have somebody call and say, hey, I'm 92, I think it's time for somebody else to do it. So they at least have gotten off before they died.
The volunteers in that corridor was not gonna be an easy task. I mean, not in a bad way, it's just not, there's not a huge amount of.
Area.
People that, you know, it does take a little bit of knowledge from, you know, to get people to step up and put the time into what could be happening, right? You know, just even the update.
It can be controversial, too.
Can be very controversial. You might have to do something and get your neighbor.
That's happened before.
Jeff, something, just doing it countywide that I think would be beneficial, like you say, because ag wants to be agged, and wants to be able to do what they want to do, which, you know, we understand that, obviously, we're supporting that. But it's almost like, at least knowing to where if someone does want to put a wedding venue on, they'll know right from the beginning it's going commercial, just because you do ag everywhere else, it's commercial. Or if you want to split this and put a residence on it, it's getting it out there, so at least they have that conversation to where they know the classification changes would be a huge issue too. Because they don't understand that one either.
And, and I understand the, the reticence to, to the controls, and I would say to the persons that are vehement about, I don't want the ordinance saying what I can do to my land, my response would be, but at the same token, the ordinance is not putting any controls on what your neighbor can do to the land. And there's no requirement for that neighbor to contact you about it and let you know ahead of time, they can just do it. And they can change the use to whatever they want. The ordinance would put in place a process whereby they have to say, this is my plan. The neighbors are notified, there's a hearing on it, and this thing, you know, this stuff is all done in a, in a guided discussion to determine what is the appropriate action according to the county's Comprehensive Land Use Plan that the board of supervisors have put together.
And just more awareness, awareness would be nice, because like, back when we bought, or when we built our house, we're like, what do you do? You, you talk to. Right, you, you talk to, you get a permit for your well, or septic, or whatever that you're doing, and otherwise, you don't, you're on your own.
Yep.
So if there are steps in place so that somebody could go, I don't know, like a website, and know what, what they had to do, that would probably be helpful for some people anyway.
As long as people understand that, you know, just because you have a public hearing and you speak out against something, doesn't mean it's gonna go away. And the board members that are on and have to answer these questions also have to realize, as long as the steps are followed, things still happen. And I think there was, you know, sitting through the process here in town, via field, there was a lot of people that thought, it's not gonna happen because we're yelling and screaming, we don't want this.
Yeah, yeah.
And people have to understand that, this, just because you have zoning in place, doesn't mean that things are gonna stop.
Right.
And things going is still beneficial to the county. I mean, bringing tax base is very important to all of us.
That, that's the key, and, and, and I, I mentioned this before, I, I think it's, it's, it's important and bears repeating. Iowa code says, if you're going to have zoning regulations, those regulations are dependent on having a comprehensive land use plan. Because when it comes to these planning commissions, um, identifying what zones are appropriate for the county in what parts of the county, that's done through the lens of the comprehensive land use plan. When people seek a variance or conditional permits, those are done through the lens of that comprehensive land use plan. So that comprehensive land use plan, um, is, is critical, and one of the reasons why it needs to be evaluated on a, on a regular basis, to make certain that it is consistent with the, the direction that the, the governing body, which is the board of supervisors, wants to guide the county.
Well, and new things come up, you know, like Jane just brought the solar stuff through. I mean, there's always gonna be things that are gonna be changing, so it's, it's good to revisit it.
Yep. Okay, so I'll, I'll initiate that stuff with the planning commission.
Jane was more in John, just things are, you know, new eyes and stuff, you see things, things change, and-
Right.
Well, and she'd been involved with it long enough, she had it all in her head.
Yep, you read the book enough, you just retain it, and then all of a sudden, hey, I know those numbers right off the top.
Right.
Well, I appreciate you putting time into this.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Definitely bring it forward as things happen, so.
Work with that commission and just, yeah, let us know what you wanna do. Well, at least get the, at least keep the structure intact for those three.
No.
So we're in line there, and then we can, first year, whatever, things can get discussed again, so.
Probably have to wait till harvest is done anyway.
To have a meeting, yep. Get out of rain.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know, Zoom from the combine works really good.
All right, so, what was that called?
IEVA awarded the tax bonus on Friday.
Saw that, it's a good deal, real good deal, so, our little, our plan is gonna work, I hope, so. And it, since we're on that discussion, Chris, you're next on the list.
This was the development down there.
Yep.
Yep. Um, Joe came in and had a map and descriptions of five different parcels, and said they're looking at doing tax abatement, or four twenty-seven B. And then four twenty-seven B kinda got knocked away, and you're looking at tax abatement, urban revitalization.
Yes.
Well, I had to brush up on four twenty-seven B, it's pretty lengthy. It's simple, but it's lengthy. Urban revitalization is also very simple. You basically designate an area, and you allow for improvements to property to be exempt from taxes for a period of time. And you can set, typically what we do is a three-year, one-hundred percent, or a ten-year sliding scale. A lot of that is dependent on what the board wants to do. So basically, down there, you have a building, and they're going to put a three-million-dollar addition on that. They come in, you have this plan in place, they apply for the exemption benefits, you approve it, it goes to the assessor. The assessor says, yep, here's the value of the improvements, and depending on your plan, that value of taxes is abated. What they're currently paying is never abated, and land is never abated. So it's a real simple, basic tool to allow an incentive for growth and development in the county. We, uh, just did one in Floyd County, it was actually a single parcel, which is unique to us. It was the first one we had done that was a single parcel. And then we did Saragota County, which happens to be the East Thornton urban revitalization area, which is, North Iowa Co-op is expanding east of Thornton. And again, instead of messing with TIF and all that debt and everything, they offered them the urban revitalization, and this will actually be approved tomorrow, so then they can apply after that, so.
So this is totally different from being involved in an urban renewal plan?
Absolutely, entirely separate.
Okay.
This is very simple, you develop a plan, an urban revitalization plan, which specifies requirements they have to meet, and then what you will allow. In a typical city one, we would do three-year or ten-year sliding scale for commercial industrial. And housing is the first seventy-five thousand is abated for five years. I took advantage of that in my house in Rockwell, it's a good deal. You're looking at commercial industrial property, so that's what you would focus on, and whether you wanna offer the three-year, hundred percent, or ten-year sliding scale. A savvy developer or business owner, in this case, North Iowa Co-op, they were willing to wait the ten years because it was more of a benefit, where some, they want the first three years and be done with it, and then move on to the next thing.
Well, and when does the three years start? Is it when it's actually on, fully on the tax rule?
As you know, taxes are what, eighteen months behind? So you apply for it, that value is then taken off, and then when you're, when you pay your regular taxes, that's when it will come.
We do it when it's complete, you know, when that value is completed, or that construction's complete. That year, we put the seventy-five thousand dollar.
So, if we're doing this, doing this process, I mean, you just talked about industrial, can we make, I mean, it'd be countywide, but can it go beyond industrial, I mean, the homes and buildings and different things, I mean?
You can, typically in a city, we would do that, but in a county, now you've got people building homes where you really don't want them building because you provide an incentive. Same with other things, you, you wanna target more of your development as to where you want the development happening.
Because you want the houses out, and the ag areas will be more sporadic and random, and it wouldn't be as much of a benefit anyway to the county.
Right.
There's people, what I'm getting at is there's people out there putting up half-a-million-dollar shops, and million-dollar grain setups, and, and things like that, that would like to participate in this too. That's where I get the flack when I do something like this, is from some pretty major investors, you know, that, oh, why am I not, I mean, I'm providing a lot of jobs and a lot of things too, why don't I get this?
That would be classification of ag too, I mean, something-
I'm just, you know, I'm just, it's, it's, it's all developed much.
Ag has an eighty-six percent growth back, so they're really, really already being such a break anyway to get an ag on top of that.
And they have the freedom to put whatever they want, whatever they want.
I've never seen a county do housing, except when they did Portland. And the reason for that was North Iowa Co-op was looking to expand. And as you know, Portland had an issue with, uh, illegal discharges of wastewater from septics that were running across people's property. In order to address that, they either had to do it as a community project, which some of the community didn't wanna be involved in that, so, and I don't know if the county said, we won't do it, or what it was, but none of the funding was then, the funding that was typically available for a project like that, none of that was available because they didn't do it as a community project. So went back to individuals, there's no funding for individuals. So, North Iowa Co-op then came in, and they bought five, six, eight properties, which then they didn't have to put in a septic system. The Co-op got the land cheaper, properties, tore down the homes. And that's the case where Saragota County did do housing, because those that were staying now had to make an improvement, and they had to put in the septic system. It improves the value of the property, and they still had to meet minimum improvement thresholds, which was ten percent. So typically, in the counties, you don't see a countywide housing benefit offered. It's to focus the commercial industrial development.
Tell them a story. So, yeah, I mean, if, if there was a need for it, so if somebody came and put into a big grain setup, but there's, are they still taxed on agricultural then?
They are.
Right, so they're, they're receiving the best tax benefit taken.
Yeah, but they're still, agriculture sector's one of the largest taxpayers in the county.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Just even, even with industrial development, we're still gonna be, you know, the ag industry is still covering a lot of, large, large portion of taxes in this county.
Sure.
I remember I came to I thirty-five, and did something on the line.
We, yeah, we can, we can do that there too.
Right.
See, we can, the way Joe explained it to me is we can, we can overlap with urban renewal or urban revitalization. If it can overlap, you just can't use both.
Right.
So depending on the size of the project, whether it's worth to do just a tax abatement, or whether to use TIF because some infrastructure is needed, that, or whatever. Um, so like if, and I think Joe did mention that with that development, the casino area, if we offered that to a urban revitalization as well, then they could come in and then they could get their tax breaks. But I don't know how that would work with the TIF dollars we used for the, for the developers.
When you, when you abate your taxes, if you're doing TIF, you incur debt. Okay, now you bring in urban revitalization, and you're abating the very thing that you wanted to increase to pay back your debt.
Right.
That's not a good thing. However, because you used windmill money, I believe.
Uh, not that.
No.
That's TIF in that area, yeah.
Because there are other areas where they did use windmill money, and they're building houses in cities through an incentive from the county. But it's not a housing TIF, because that has the sunset side requirements. This is a developer TIF. And I'll leave that one alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city benefits more from that than the county though.
The developer benefits firstly.
Yeah.
Which is why this one was done. And then, yes, the city does benefit, as does the county down the road. Any development benefits both parties down the road.
All three parties.
People only see the short-term negatives, not the long-term benefits.
Yes, and sometimes people don't see the negatives at all.
Right.
Depending on what they're pushing for.
I get it, I get it.
Well, that's why with New Heaven, I'm wondering why we didn't just do something like this, instead of, because, yeah, a lot easier.
Yeah, that would have been an easier solution.
Here's one thing, this is section four of the, and this is standard language, this is pretty much in all of our plans. Revitalization benefits in the area are not applicable to any property in the area that are currently or will be assessed as agricultural, except that the primary residential structure, structure considered to be accessory, the principal residential structure shall be eligible as other residential property would be. And part of this is that the guy putting up the sixty-by-one-hundred pole shed, that wouldn't get the benefits. If they built a garage to go with their house, that would, but a sixty-by-one-hundred garage, no. So, you're offering an incentive for commercial industrial primarily targeted areas, by the casino certainly, Manly certainly. So, Northwood.
So that's why that land has to change.
No.
Categories.
No, that's just the investor wanting it changed. They don't wanna come in, buy this land and say, well, we're not gonna, you're not gonna rezone that, it's gonna stay ag. They, they just don't understand, they're, they're used to working in cities where zoning, they have, they always work with zoning.
But if it's ag, can you do that?
What's that?
If it's ag, you can't do that though, urban revitalization.
In this case, no. Like I say, typically, this is the language from Iowa code. The idea is that you're not incentivizing people to remove productive ag land from production. You're, you're, you're trying not to encourage sprawl. Now, when you get down in Des Moines, in that area, West Des Moines, Dallas County, they have used this to where they've actually done ten-year, one-hundred percent tax abatement. Because the developers, they're building these subdivisions, nobody's building homes. Well, the problem is, the people that bought the home ten years ago, well, if you're paying no taxes for ten years down an urban area, you're talking two, three, five thousand dollars a year? It makes that new home a lot more attractive than that existing home that you are paying the taxes on. So a lot of them have ended those practices.
Not only that, people may not realize that, okay, can I afford this house now? But a few years down the road, when my taxes all of a sudden start coming due, can I afford an extra five thousand dollars a year, you know?
Think about that, you're looking at four hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Probably minimum.
I'm top-
Higher tier mortgage.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be if you were spending that four hundred dollars a month for the last ten years, you're in shape, there's a difference.
So, yeah, I mean, it-
Do it the right way.
Live there for ten years, get out of it, off you go.
You're doing it again.
The important thing about tax payment is, is this has to be all planned out before construction started. That's why New Heaven, they went TIF because they'd already started the construction.
Yes and no. A lot of this is dependent on your assessor, because when you, when you check out the plan, it'll say, they need to apply while the area is in place, can't be before, can't be after. Well, some have done it before, and the assessor accepted it. Some have not done it until a year later, and the assessor has accepted it. If you already built it, and your assessor has come out and said, yep, there's million-dollar value, now you wanna apply? Your base valuation should be that million dollars. Some assessors will go back, or they will take away one year and give you the remaining years. We're dealing with it right now down in Portland, guy built a brand-new house, this was in place. Clerk's transition, new clerk was in, didn't know the process, property owner didn't know the process, now it's up to the assessor. So you, as a board, you approve the applications, some assessors will say, hang on to them until February, because you have to get them by March to the assessor. And then some will say, no, I want them as you pass them. When I take out a building permit, I would fill out my urban rewrite application at that time.
Which we don't have building permits, so, that's another thing that we should probably work on.
If you do your zoning, you will. And one has nothing to do with the other.
And we don't even have to charge for them, it'd just be nice to have those tools in our toolbox at the time, instead of planning, instead of further out.
Yeah. I think they charge-
There should be a fee for it.
There is a fee on our county fee schedule. The most recent fee, fee schedule that I found was from twenty-twelve.
Because why should I pay for your-
So Chris, basically, the, the land down there now is agricultural.
Yes.
Does it have to be changed?
We pay for lots of it.
Before we can-
I would say you wanna change anyway.
Right. Well, and, and the way that, obviously, Manly's got control of portion of it.
Right.
To change that zoning classification, because they get out that far. The northern portion of that is gonna fall, just with basically somebody coming into the assessor and changing it.
Yes, the northern two-thirds.
Yeah. So, and that's still on the south of the tracks?
Yeah, so what happens is the, the, there's a, a loop
Yep.
Of the tracks, there's three parcels in that loop.
Yep.
Uh, that are currently ag, there's crops on them.
Yep.
The bottom parcel falls inside the Manly extraterritorial zone.
Yep.
So Manly has to, has to rezone that. So Manly has to, has to rezone that. The top two parcels fall outside of Manly.
Yep.
They're outside of the three townships that have historically been understood to be zoned in the county, so they do whatever they want. For those top two parcels, they just need to, well, there's actually nothing that they need to, they just do whatever they want. They don't even have to tell the assessor it's different.
Right.
Presumably the assessor will find out and then reassess them.
Yep, right.
But they do whatever they want. I, i- with the exception of changing the parcels, if they chop the parcels up, then it needs to, well, actually, if we don't have a subdivision ordinance, they don't have to do that either. Which is why these things are.
Depends, when you get to what, the third division of the original, then they have to, not necessarily a full subdivision, but, because we did this in Rockwell, they were doing one at a time.
Yeah, I, the, I, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I, I thought the Iowa code said three or more, but I'm not sure if it.
Three or more of the original. It's not three at one time. In the original, six hundred and forty acres, I believe.
So anyways, the, the, because one of the questions we'll discuss is that northern portion, there's another facility looking to move in that.
You would rezone that for that.
Okay.
And right now, because you wouldn't want the farmer putting up a pole shed for their farming operation in that land, that's why the ag wouldn't be eligible.
Right, because, and they're between the owners now and the new owners, it's, they're in that process and they're going to be contacting the assessor to get it changed. Because the new owners won't, don't want to act on anything until it is changed.
And even if you rezone it, you have zoning and you zone it as industrial, it's still a non-conform use, quite farming.
Right, right.
And we can't just change it, we have to go by principle use, so that would have to be something that they wanted to do it and buy it before December thirty first, and it's not commercial. That'd be getting Jeff Greve involved in some kind of illegal thing that, you know, you bought it as commercial, then if it changes and doesn't, principle use doesn't change next year, then someone's responsible for the commercial taxes or, so there's got to be some lane.
Yeah.
Legal.
And that's what I told, that's what I've told the people I've been talking with, is that you need to figure out an agreement between the new owners and the current owners, so that by the end of this year, whatever it's in, that's what it'll be next year. You know, so if it goes commercial right now, or by the end of the year, it's going to be commercial for one year, and if it doesn't get built, somebody's still responsible for those commercial taxes.
That's the only way I can see us doing it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, that would need to get changed as well. Which it, it's in the process, I just don't know when that's.
So if it's still farm ground, you can still assess it as commercial?
Well.
If it's, because it's not a zone, it's land use, right?
Yeah, see, and it's, it's a fine line, it's something I'll have to be checking into, I'm just trying to, if there is a way, the only way would be is if they bought it December first, well, what's the use of that land? Well, they're saying when they're buying it, it's commercial. I mean, they're doing something in writing saying, we are buying it because it's commercial, we want it switched to commercial.
Yeah.
That's a legal thing, that's something where Jeff will have to get with him, will that meet the code? Because the code goes by principle use, which is still ag land as of December thirty first.
Right.
Isn't that something you'd have to apply to zoning to determine if it can be switched or not, or no?
Well, zoning doesn't, because an area can be zoned something, but will still classified as principal use no matter what the zoning is on that.
Yes, and that, people have real hang up on that sometimes. Well, it's zoned as commercial. No, you don't have zoning. Well, they've zon, they've, they've assessed it as commercial. Okay, that's different than land use.
But the assessment is based on, you said, primary use.
Principal use as of December thirty first.
So if there's, whatever they intend to use it for, whatever it's being used for as of that date is the land use for tax purposes. It falls, right, for, for tax purpose classification, for, uh, because the zoning does not apply, it doesn't matter. So if December thirty first, it's being used for ag purposes, it's got crops on it, there's no buildings, it's not being used for industrial or commercial use, it'll be taxed that way, regardless of whether in June, there's a big building that goes up for industrial use. The next year, because the building is there, the land use will have changed, the tax classification changes, zoning had nothing.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
And the, just going back to the subdivision, Iowa code just says a subdivision plot should be made when a tract of land is subdivided by repeated divisions or simultaneous divisions into three or more parcels, any of which are described by Meats and Bounce description, so it, it's just any tract of land that chopped into three.
Yep, it rarely does it happen that way.
Yeah.
Because nobody wants, in the case of Rockwell, this was like the ninth or tenth one, the guy paid hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars for farm ground that he was going to put a house on, and it's an eight hundred and fifty to a million dollar home. Who would want to stop that because they didn't do a proper subdivision? What it amounted to, the issue then was running water and sewer, and who was going to be responsible for that? Well, the city had, they hadn't approved subdivision, the guy hadn't done a subdivision, the Lions, when they sold it to him, didn't ask if he had a subdivision. They saw a way to get some money back from the land they did, and he fell away to build a home that he wanted, where he wanted it. It's that big monstrosity on the north end of town, if you ever drive by. And it is a nice home. But that's what you run into, and there's not an assessor in the world that wants to stop a development like that, and the increased tax revenue. It's not, it, you know, it's not good or bad or nothing, just it happens all the time and. So this, this whole process, basically, if you engage an I O C O to do it, we will have a, you will do a resolution of finding that you have a need for this incentive for commercial industrial development. We'll leave the housing out of it for now. So you have that notice of finding, we then develop the plan with the land use, uh, current land use, future land use, zoning the boundary area where you want to do it, and then we get a list of all the property owners, with their valuation, uh, classification, use classification, not zoning. So we have a list of all this good stuff. In this case, it was one, this was North Iowa Co-op, land value is twenty seven five. But they paid three hundred some, they're investing ten million dollars, so that would be huge improvement. So you have that, you have to notify the affected property owners with the thirty day notice that you're going to have a public hearing. So you get the plan ready, you gotta have the plan done, a draft of the plan, ready, so that if the public wants to come in and look at it, you have it here available for them, or on your website or whatever. So you're looking, just say forty days for that. Okay, then you have your public hearing, then you have to wait thirty days to see if any property owner would request a second public hearing. I think that says affected property owners, but I assume it could be any property owner in, in the county. So you have to wait that thirty days, or you just schedule one after thirty days. Have that, well, then you can adopt a plan. So you adopt the plan by resolution, and then you pass an ordinance, and then they can apply. So you're looking, if you follow waiting the thirty days and don't have anything scheduled, why anybody would request a second one is beyond me, I've never had it happen. I've had people show up at the first one, because they were told to be there because of the taxes. Well, only property owners benefit from this, so it shouldn't be anything or against. So you're looking probably three months, four months minimum to do this, which would put you in, what are we, basically November, December, January, February? You could have it in place by February. You can't get away from those thirty day notifications in the timeline, so that's minimum sixty days.
Well, so if nobody requests a second hearing? Because the, the question was brought up, I think Joe mentioned it, and now we only have two supervisors. We can no longer waive.
You can't waive.
Do the three readings.
Readings, yeah. So if nobody requests a second, are we still?
You still have an ordinance which requires three readings, so you're looking three weeks then.
Okay.
And I don't believe you can do special meetings in between there, so.
Right.
It's still three weeks, but again, your assessor is going to get these applications. So just say you did it in February and it's done. Yeah, you can probably do that. You would, there would be an application filed, you would approve it, it would go to the assessor, and they'd be ready to go. So that tax value for this year would then apply, and anything done after that would be added improvement.
I know, I just know it's going to be the long, longer, the processes that we're throwing, but I think that's just the easiest way, because then you can either go zero or go on a sliding scale, you know, just commit it to a twenty seven B portion of a sliding scale.
Yeah, and sure, I've not seen many people that use that. They either do the TIF or they do the urban rewrite. Urban rewrite is the simplest. The TIF, you end up at the same place, except you put in infrastructure, you incurred debt to do that.
Yeah.
This, you don't have to do any of that. It's whatever they build is what can get abated based on what they chose.
Right, and we're not missing the money anyways, because it's not there.
Exactly.
So if we don't see it for three more years, it's not an issue. They get the benefit by us helping them out that way, and then after that, three years is up, then the guys will start rolling into the county.
So you only have to notify property owners, not authorities? Because?
Just property owners, only the affected property owners, in this case, you've got five. If that's the area you're doing.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that want it sold, aren't they?
Yeah, and they're the ones we're working with, you know, what, um, uh, whether it's Iowa Northern, Manly Logistics Park is selling some to Sukup. That's who we're working with on that, that same group is also involved in the rest with the Hathman family.
Yep.
Um, they've got land options to buy, so Hathmans are all on board to, to do this as well, it's just, everybody, uh, that we're working with is, is in on this, I mean, it's not like we're, we have one out there that's going to be a sore thumb in the middle of a group, it's, everybody's aware of all this going on, so.
They don't get hurt by anything, they only benefit from it.
Exactly.
So.
Exactly, and at the end of it, everybody does, you know?
And how much does the process cost?
Thousand bucks. We do everything, it's just, we'll send the notices to you, you mail them out, and it's all done.
So we've got some, that's your, that's yours, we've got advertising, which, you said that, right? Paper, most of the public notices.
The fee to I O C O to do it is a thousand bucks, and you end up with three copies of this, um, just to have it here.
No legal counsel?
Shouldn't need it.
Cool.
Nope, none of that stuff. It's pretty straightforward, I mean, it's all laid out almost exactly in Iowa code.
Yep.
And we follow that almost to a T. There are other entities, they get creative in what they offer and how they offer it. We like to stick to what state code says specifically. Because you can make a different finding and offer some funky, uh, schedule. We don't do that, just like the housing, it's five years, seventy five thousand. In my case, that was, it saved me five to six thousand dollars in Rockwell. Well, of course, when that goes away, you don't like to see that dollar, mom.
Right.
But I benefited from what I got at the time, so. And, well, this was only housing, but you can't build a house for seventy five thousand dollars, right? So there's automatically an improvement in the, in the valuation and the tax base. In fact, I had one assessor in a county to the east of you who showed up at a meeting encouraging this to happen, because he said, okay, you've got a vacant lot, right now that's valued at five thousand dollars, it would be ten, but it's vacant. So as soon as you move that first shovel of dirt, now it's not vacant, it automatically went up to the full value of ten thousand dollars, you just increased your taxable valuation by five thousand dollars. He said, you can't build a house for seventy five thousand, so just say two hundred thousand, which, with the things as they are now, it'll be three hundred thousand or more. Mine's being trailer'd in tomorrow, thank God we ordered it when we did. So, yeah, it's, it's a simple process, we walk you through everything, and it, it, it's not complicated, it's the easiest way to offer an incentive, and there's no risk to the county whatsoever.
Sure.
You're not incurring debt.
Yep.
And it lasts for ten years. You can go longer, you can go shorter, we like to do the ten years, that's what it says in state code, and then you review it again, you can continue this indefinitely. Well, sometimes legislation changes, so it's a good to come in and review it, they added multifamily, and had that in the past.
Sure.
To me, that was commercial, well, multifamily is a separate classification, so that assessor was a stickler as to doing it, while even talking to Bob Johnsons, which, you know, you can't get a more guru than Bob Johnsons when it comes to tech stuff. He said, well, it ends up the same in the end, but yes, this is what you should do, so we did it.
So, yes, the next step is for us then, huh?
We can send you up a proposal that you can act on next, uh, week if you want to.
Do that, since proposal costs.
Yep.
What we'll do for you, um, we'll make it an action item for next week.
And then put the resolution of finding on there at the same time. Somebody will be up here, and again, we can do the contract, we'll get right into it.
And that resolution, you will, yeah.
What's that?
We need to do that resolution, or will you take care of writing the resolution?
Yes, I'll send the resolution out.
You'll give me the verbiage?
Absolutely, and it'll be just the full resolution, and then I'll go through the plan and point out some things that are variable, depending on where you're at, your objectives, what do you want to happen in the county, things like that. And I'll explain all this stuff just exactly as we've done everywhere else, then we'll have the draft plan. The, the verbiage done, I'll still need the maps and everything else, so we'll get all that put together and then we can, we can act on this right away.
Okay.
Looking at setting dates and stuff.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Drops up a proposal then, and we'll, uh, we'll put that stuff on as action items next week.
Thanks, Chris. That's all I got.
Perfect, thank you, we appreciate the explanation, it helps out a lot, so.
Yeah, it's.
Joseph, this is your baby, so.
It's so simple, it's complicated, and so complicated, it's simple.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget.
Don't want to lose the map.
No, no, those are like gold, you know?
Thanks, Chris.
Well, that'll.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a very reasonable price for them to do the paperwork, the hardest part.
And just to have it.
Right.
Figured out and.
Yep.
Know what they're going to get upfront and not have to worry about it.
Yep, and, and I, I mean, I guess I haven't personally talked with, with Tom Sukups, what they were expecting, if they were going to do the sliding scale, or I just think they just needed something for their grant, and that's the best solution for us to assist them, because they have to, it's just like the, the Joyce Library and the, uh, Northwood Event or, uh, Center to School or whatever, you know, that's just going to be our portion of helping them out, they had to have some sort of local match or local funds go there, so. But yeah, I think that's, that'll be the best way, they can set everything up and get us through with the long process, but.
Just to have clarity on that process, because it's sort of confusing. Is when they apply for it, you know, say they say it's going to be three hundred thousand dollars, when they apply for it one year and they're only at a hundred thousand, because they're in the process of building it. You know, when do you want that to start? Do you want it to actually start when the project is finished? They're going to want that, because if they're going to get, you know what I mean?
Well, it takes them nine months to build a facility.
That's the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, I'd probably say when the project's completed.
When the project's completed, okay, but just, just sort of keep that in mind, because sometimes things can go a year or two, and when you want that to be completed.
Yeah, it's obvious, so let's say, what's one more year of it being?
Correct.
Ag land or something we've never had before.
And that's why you treat a house, or you treat a building or anything, right? You mean, it comes on when it's fully completed, not when it's started.
Well, there's, assessors do it differently.
Right.
They do it differently, because some people start building a house and it takes them four years. They apply for it, but they're building their own house, and it takes two or three years, well, then you're sitting there, okay, when do you put it out?
Wash your structure and your square footage is up, there's a little bit. There's a little bit difference. I mean, you know, I mean, even if it takes four years to build a house, your structure and your square footage is there. You can tax it as a house at that time, right?
There might be incentive to get it done sooner.
Yeah, I mean.
But anyway, so that's just something to keep in mind. There's some, you know, logistics of it, but.
And that was their, their discussion too, was maybe doing some dirt work this fall and then construction start in spring.
Have any value, so that may make a difference.
No. But then hopefully, they probably want to get it going sooner than later. So hopefully by mid, late summer, they're in that building.
Yep.
Doing what they want to do, so. Yeah, sounds good. Jason Petersburg. How are you, my friend?
Morning. Good. Couple of things. I talked to Ron Frye with Boyd end of last week. Agreed on what he needs to see to sign off on our drainage plan and everything. Um, after discussion, I don't think it's going to be a big issue. We'll get him something on that this week. So then that'll be addressed. Other than that, I owe you some street lighting. I did just bid another project similar to it last week and we got good numbers on it. So I'll talk to the same two contractors and see if they're interested in putting one up there.
Sounds good. Once we get the stuff done with Boyd gaming, then we can move on with the final plat and everything, correct?
Correct. And that does not need to go to planning and zoning. Um, it's my understanding there wasn't any changes per se from what was reviewed and approved previously, so.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Jason?
No.
Thanks. That it?
Yep.
All right, thanks. Uh, our planning and zoning appointment will just be pushed on for now.
On going.
All right, Supervisor Weekly, Ark.
At Wellness Meeting, Monday after the meeting here, we did achieve our deductions and our insurance for next year, which is good. So, but you know, if you still got things, pillars you can complete, you got to the end of the month to do it. So if you want to do them, go ahead, get you maybe a little more money yourself, so. A day on Monday, I had both hazmat and transportation on Wednesday. I wasn't able to get into the haz, or the hazmat meeting. For some reason, I didn't have the link. But I got into transportation and just discussed, Chris could have told you about it too. They did a huge multi-study on why people keep transportation around. You know, what, what's the reasons why they drive, why they don't, why they have a car, why they don't? Things like that. It was kind of interesting, a lot of the facts, I forgot off, I can't remember them all. Because I was actually zooming from the combine, to be honest, but. Want to make sure, just basically at a, at a quorum and heard a lot of interesting things. Um, I also had, of course, Iowa Workforce Development. We have signed our agreement with Central Iowa Juvenile Attention to be our fiscal agent. We've hired a temporary director right now, Heather Garcia. So it'll be on a contract type of situation. She has a business that does multiple, she'll be doing multiple districts, so we'll have that. Saves us some money. Um, and we've got, we've got a full local workforce development board. They got all their gender, their political, they got their balance, they got everything right. So that's all in place. So we're, we're right on track to making our goals for the state and the federal government. So we'll be all key there. Also participated Friday with North Iowa Juvenile Attention. We were able to get a quorum together. Again, I did that with Zoom, but just went over, you know, if you've been to the meeting, AJ, yeah, but we have our standard reports for financials. Things are doing, they're doing well. Their biggest problem, it's the biggest problem with Central Iowa and North Iowa Juvenile Tensions is collecting the money from the MCOs. And they're constantly behind. Can't remember what the dollar was, but it makes it look like we're in a negative cash flow position there at North Iowa or Central, you know, and we're really not. I mean, they all have a million dollars.
Right.
You know, in Central Iowa, I think it's, I haven't been to that, I haven't listened to that for a little while. That's close to millions of dollars, you know? It's just getting them to, you know, they, they pay, but they're always behind.
Right.
And so, so anyway, those are, that's what I had last week.
I had a one with Metco on Monday. Um.
Participating on.
Yeah. We did just go through the quarterly business kind of, um, you know, discussion of third developments and that stuff going on. And then also met with, um, John Lear from Heartland Power, Bruce from IDAG and Mark Toma from WCTA and just trying to get some ideas. They're wondering how they could help us market that, that place out there. So we had a good discussion on them. IDAG's got a lot of resources. Like say, Heartland and, and WCTA want to, want to sell their services. So they got some marketing ideas for us and just try to see what we can do to get that place rolling. And then I also had the One with Metco Advisory Board on Wednesday night over in Leland.
Thanks for taking me.
Yep, went to that. So I did a lot of traveling last week, but, um, it was very good. It's, I kind of like that meeting, you know, you go through and talk with all the communities around and see what they're doing, what issues they're having. And, and I mean, everybody seems pretty active on that board, so kind of a good deal, so. Um, but some more like, that's just the first one I've been to in better than a year. Because that was, Ken always took care of them. So it was just good to see those people again and, and see what they got going on, so. Ah, I think that was it.
That's why I take notes.
Right, yeah.
So.
Yep, yep. So very busy last week and there's more to come this week, so. Um, I think when you put on the agenda.
There are boards that Kenny needs, I mean, you, Kenny just, you have any seen? Okay.
No, I'm working there, I'm in on the loop with, uh, mental health.
Okay.
Um, so I'm getting that stuff and I'll be attending other meetings. There's one coming up twenty second.
If you got something, hopefully the next week or so, I'll be pretty well wrapped up.
Yeah. So, yeah, anyways, as far as I'm getting that, I've been getting that stuff in care of, so.
Any more notice?
Well, at least maybe sending reminders or whatever and make sure I'm reading, actually getting the dates right and.
Yeah.
The calendar, so.
But then, yeah, you put Chris on there, the urban rebate for next week. I think that's it, so.
You guys going to be doing for Snore Mobile parking lot this year? Probably should start talking about it. Put it on the general.
Well, what, I was just going to say, you've got that. You know, we've replaced a few loaders now. We still have this old cat that we've been using in Northwood. And we do have that snow pusher off the, off the other cat we bought. Do you guys want to use it for the parking lot here?
Who's going to run it?
Who's going to run it?
Well, it's just, I did, I didn't know what you guys' plans were. If Brian was going to run it or if, I don't know what your plans are, so.
I like the idea, but that's for now. I think we should probably just.
Because we have, um.
Springer.
Yeah. I think that's been working.
It did a real good job. They stepped in partially, partially through the year last year.
I'm just thinking too, that, that other unit, that case we bought had that municipal front plow on wing. We should, we don't probably need that around. We should probably think about seeing if there's a city or town in the county